This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order on December 5th, 2023 at 6:01 PM. Sorry, I don't have mine. Here we go. Okay. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording? Okay, great. Participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Believe we have one set if we're ready to proceed.
Yep.
Yeah, all set. I make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 28, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Eastern Minerals Incorporated to supply the town with CC rock salt or solar salt. Let's see, we have DPW Superintendent Randy Sylvester and Kathy Riley with us. Thank you both.
Kathy, you want to go or you want me?
Sure. I don't care. The town of Medfield does a... We participated in a bid that they did on behalf of 29 other towns. And their select board just last week voted to award the contract its Eastern Minerals. And I think I noted on the cover memo, but it's a much better price than it was last year. I'm assuming because they didn't have a... They probably have a surplus, I'm guessing. But in any case, it's $59 and change versus $89 last year per ton.
Yeah, that's great. I saw that the price went down and it looks like the rock salt and the solar salt are the same price this year. I believe the solar was more expensive last year.
Yes.
Right.
Actually, actually, it's the lowest it's been in three years.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that just because of surplus, Randy, or do you think there's not...
I believe so. We... Well, we used quite a bit of salt last year, but it's probably a surplus, yes.
Okay. Okay. Joe, do you have any questions about the contract?
No, I noted the price change in our favor. It all looks good and it's timely since snow was in the forecast for tomorrow morning.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Eastern Minerals, Inc. to supply the town with CC rock salt or solar salt in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Thank you. And stay for the next agenda item to consider approval of the agreement with Weston and Sampson to provide design, engineering, and permitting services for the main sewer line located in a portion of the Route 3A Highway in Hingham. Do you want to explain this one, Kathy?
I could tell you how we procured it. It was Weston's... This is Weston and Sampson? I'm sorry, we have two of them on the agenda. Right. Weston and Sampson, we solicited quotes... We solicited qualifications, just as we would maybe an architect that's an engineer. So you'd solicit them for their qualifications and then negotiate the price. So we did it through the state, the OSD statewide contract for engineering. And Weston and Sampson was awarded and Randy negotiated the price. And so we should be all set to move forward with the 3A project with them.
Okay, great. And when do we expect this first phase to be complete?
They have to... They're setting up for two test holes. They have to investigate. The first part of it is investigation, then the design and engineering, and then they'll still have to permit it. So I'm looking by spring, late spring, in order for them to be significantly designed and on its way.
Okay. And then do they automatically get the Phase 2 work or is that another RFQ or RFP process?
No, it's part of the... It's part of this.
Okay.
This RFQ.
Okay.
They've been our engineer for sewer for 10 years anyway.
Yes.
They're very familiar with our system.
Okay. Okay, good. I'll turn it over to Joe and Bill. And then Michelle, if you don't mind just talking a little bit about the ARPA funds component, I think that would be helpful. But Joe, do you have any questions about the contract?
Yeah, so just getting back to the date question that you were asking, Liz. The contract provides for all services to be completed no later than November 30th of 2025. So is that when this entire project is expected to be concluded?
Yes.
And the funds for this project, to the extent that town funds are used, is it funded through sewer fees?
This is... Go ahead, Michelle.
We expect that this entire project will be funded by ARPA funds available through Plymouth County. We did get town meeting authorization to borrow just in case that wasn't available, but we've talked to Plymouth County and there's no reason to expect that we won't get the grant funds for this.
Okay, great. But to the extent that funds are not available, would it be funded through sewer fees or by the town's general fund?
Sewer fees.
Yeah, I mean, that's my understanding. I just want to make sure that that's right. No, I've reviewed the contract. And the Weston and Sampson have been the town's engineers for a number of years. And my understanding is that there have been no complaints. In fact, quite to the contrary, we've been very satisfied. So I'm prepared to proceed.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
Is the total amount going to be made up of ARPA? Is it going to become... So the 460 is a contract. Is ARPA going to cover the whole thing?
Yes.
Great, excellent. What a great use of the money. So fantastic. Thank you. No other questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Clark?
Okay, I'm unmuted. I just want to say that in the larger context, in order to build this and use any remaining ARPA funds, we have to actually get the construction work done by the end of 2026. So if we can make a 2025 schedule and we get the bond issue and make a 2025 schedule, that would be great. Because that would save us significant... I don't know how much would be left. Michelle can answer that. But I think it would save us a million, million and a half dollars. And we'll have to be bonded the rest, unfortunately.
Clark's right. This is the first phase of a two-phase project. And we were planning to use with the select board approval, it's close to $2 million, actually, that would be left in ARPA funds that would be available for the construction fees of this project, which we would expect would be an article at town meeting for this spring.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, and also for those that, you know, are listening at home or might watch this meeting later, ARPA funds, we've kind of thrown that term around, that's federal money that we received during COVID that can be used for specific purposes that the federal government determined to be COVID-related, and sewer was one of them. So it's a great use of the money. It's federal money. It's not paid for through tax dollars, well, you know, local property tax dollars. But it's still a great, great way to spend the money that we route, we've been given by the federal government. Michelle, is that accurate, how I described it?
Yep, yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Bill, for reinforcing that. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Weston and Sampson Engineers Incorporated to provide design, engineering, and permitting services for the main sewer line located in a portion of the Route 3A Highway in Hingham in an amount not to exceed $460,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That's... That'll be... Yeah, it's a great project and a great use of the ARPA funds. So happy to see that. Get started. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Woodard and Curran to provide stormwater master planning services to the town. Kathy, you want to explain this one?
Sure. We went out to a full bid, well, request for qualifications also in the same instance for engineering services on the master plan. And we chose Woodard and Curran. There were two respondents on that. And Randy negotiated the final price. And so also, I'm sure Michelle will talk about, ARPA fund funded. And that's another thing that needs to move ahead quickly.
Great, thank you. Randy, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, this is part of our Phase 2 stormwater program. And they're going to upgrade our mapping and finish our mapping and our testing. And then they're going to look at our needs and develop a plan, which is going to be the stormwater master plan for future years. And it will be eligible to get funding if it's in our master plan. So they're going to do a lot of investigation work and inspection and see what we have and what we need, and then put it all in the plans so we're prepared if there's funding available.
Okay, great. Great. And Michelle, can you comment again on the ARPA funds and how that will work?
Sure. So as Bill mentioned before, there's kind of general buckets that ARPA funds can be used for. And one broad one is water, sewer, and broadband. Within the water piece of this is there are stormwater components. So we're proposing using ARPA money to fund this project. As we did discuss with the board, I think it was like back in March at this point. It's nice because we're matching federal dollars through ARPA to federal mandates that basically come down through the EPA for the MS4 program that Randy's always looking for money to administer every year. And I think as those requirements get more stringent, it's nice to have at least some resources come into the town to help us tackle those. So that's what we're doing.
Right, great. And obviously, there's enough funds for the several projects that we're talking about here. It's not that we have to pick one over the other.
That's right. So and we've talked to Plymouth County about this project as well. It fits squarely within the criteria. So we have contemplated both of these, the stormwater master plan, the initial phase of the sewer work and the construction phase of the sewer work in our ARPA plans.
Okay, great. Joe, any questions or comments?
So just, Randy, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the stormwater management plan is actually a requirement under the EPA permit that the town is operating under. Right? So that... So we have to do this. And I think it's really great that you've put together this funding arrangement that can pay for something that the town is obligated to do. And again, I've reviewed the agreement and I'm familiar with the company and I'm prepared to move forward. No other questions.
Great, thank you, Joe. Bill, any questions or comments?
The only question is, Michelle, after we approve this contract, will we have any ARPA money left or have we exhausted all of it?
Most of it is contemplated for the... Like, most of the remaining balance is contemplated for the second half of the sewer project, the construction. There is a small separate pot of ARPA funds that's kind of available for lost revenue. So there is a balance of about $470-ish thousand that remains from Hingham's overall pot of four-ish million from Plymouth County. So there's a little bit left that the board and us will be able to decide what to do with. But for this piece of it, where we have to fit it into a specific bucket, I think we're making good use for the sewer and stormwater projects.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Woodard and Curran, Inc. to provide stormwater master planning services to the town in an amount not to exceed $399,900.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Randy, for all your work on this and all the negotiations. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Thanks, Clark, for being here. All right. Next on the agenda are appointments. Do we have any appointments this evening?
I do. I'd make a motion to appoint Christopher Good to the Development and Industrial Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent, thank you. Any other appointments? Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Next are Town Administrator and Select Board reports. Art, do you want to go next?
Yes, and I do have an update to provide on a project that we've been working on for a while. I'll do my best to be brief, but also to keep it simple, I have a few slides to share.
Excellent.
And can everybody see the title slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. This is just a quick update on where we are with a system called MyHingham. Their formal technical role or name for this is Citizen Requesting Management Software. Something that we purchased from a company called GoGov. And our DPW and IT teams have been working together to prepare it for launch. It's a new approach that will allow the town, staff, residents, and businesses to collaborate on reporting and sharing information about issues or service requests relating to how our government functions in the community. And it will also provide a great management tool that will not just help us work more efficiently, but I think help us over time identify what we're doing well and identify successes that we can share. This follows... We're at the point of where we're launching this and making it available to the community. It follows a period of, you could call, beta testing with a small number of residents in the community, as well as a period of staff training. I'll keep it very simple. What I really want to do is touch on these questions here while highlighting the functions of this app or this software and provide some visuals that will help orient everybody on it. So first and foremost, what is MyHingham? It's a phone-based app that will allow folks who download this app onto their phones, residents, business owners, et cetera, the opportunity to report issues that they might see in the community or in the public space that might need attention. You know, potholes are a great example. There's certainly many other issues, block, storm, water, drains, et cetera, that people see. And they want to share that information, but they're also looking for feedback from the town in terms of, well, has that information been received? Is it being acted on? What this app will do is provide a two-way path for communication on those kinds of issues. But also, it will provide the means to share information about the town through the website in a very simple sort of way. Just looking at the icon here on the screen, now there's a button that says "Start Request", that triggers a process for submitting a request. But you can also see a number of different links down below that relate to the town calendar, Agenda Center. Just makes important aspects of what Hingham Government does and important information about it much more useful and accessible. So how does one get access to this resource? Now, the app is designed to be downloaded onto a phone and it's available in two formats, for Android phone users as well as Apple phone users. Access directly from Google Play, which is the Android source, or the Apple Store. Just simply searching on MyHingham will identify the app and make it available also for download. We've also created a QR code here, which you see on the screen, that can be scanned with a phone and can bring you your phone directly to the right app store and to the right app immediately available to install. We're making this portal or this resource also available through our website at the link shown here. And it will function in the same sort of way in terms of reporting requests and sharing information. What I want to stress here is this is an important tool for sharing information about town issues, but it's certainly not for reporting emergencies. You know, if there's a crime or a health emergency, those are best shared with the town through calling 911. And what I also want to stress here is that while this app is an important tool and be relevant to a lot of people, we recognize that it will be important for people to communicate directly with us in other ways. Folks who are less comfortable with using an application or an app on a phone. So our DPW is retaining the ability to take a call directly, you know, as outlined on their website. So how does it work? Now, this slide provides a very quick way of looking at important steps to submitting a request. Now, up top here, we have what the app icon will look like on your phone. Simply the town seal embedded in a nice gold background. Clicking on it will bring you to that home screen, what I showed you before. Pressing the "Start Request" button will lead a user through a series of screens that will provide the kind of information the town needs to take action. First, choosing topics. And the way we're building out this application is to focus specifically on DPW-related issues. Over time, as we gain experience, we'll expand it to a broader range of town-related issues. But we clearly wanted to start with DPW. So for example, there's a range of highway issues, a range of sewer issues, et cetera. After selecting one of them brings the user to an important next step. And that is if they have the capacity or interest to take a picture of what the issue is. A picture is a great way to ensure shared understanding what a problem is. And then after submitting the photo, locating with precision exactly where the problem is. With this, with the app, you can grab and move the map around so that you can locate the site of the problem directly under the pin, you know, shown in the center here. Then last, identify, provide any additional information, provide the means to actually get feedback and submit. As I said before, this whole approach is intended to be a two-way means of communication. Residents and businesses sharing requests, identifying issues, but also providing the means to communicate back. And there's a way for individuals, those users, to track where the requests are at through a request screen. And this example highlights the requests that have been submitted as well as status. And this example, a drainage issue closed and a pothole issue open. And then drilling down into these requests for more detail to get a sense of the status, including communications from the owner, in this case, issue owner, in this case, the Public Works Department. So this will... Deploying the app will be about the town gaining important information and putting it in one place about issues. It also provides the means to update residents as to the status of those issues so that they understand that their voice is heard. The app, based on a phone, is what you might call the front end of the system. The back end of the system, which is available to town staff, provides all the pieces that are necessary for the town to efficiently assign, track, report, and ultimately manage the range of requests that we're getting. That will make our work behind the scenes more efficient. And it should also facilitate communication, you know, across departments as we identify new issues that might not be as straightforward to address. And as you might imagine, this includes a number of different reports that can be run for management purposes. So we can keep track of where things are at, identify issues that might need extra attention, as well as, as I said before, identify work that has been done so that we can share that work with the community. Informing the community of this resource and getting people to use it is an important part of all this. Today, in addition to this presentation, we've issued an initial press release and done some initial social media work, you know, to get the word out. As of this writing, we have maybe, we're aware of maybe 45 downloads of this app onto phones in the community. We want to see that number go up. And talking with our GoGov partners, we recognize that's going to take some time to drive uptake. And we'll be reaching out to the community in a number of different ways going forward. Certainly look forward to opportunities to presenting to different boards and committees, working with our new PR firm. We're looking at a social media campaign. We're certainly going to look for ways just to make information available through posters, direct mail. And we are in conversation with Harbor Media about different video opportunities. So you'll see more about the app, you know, in the coming weeks. And it will take time to build interest and it will take time for the town to learn to make best use of the system. And it will touch many people, far beyond just the people who are actually immediately involved in addressing an issue. So those are the high points. And I welcome any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you, Art. I think this is a great step forward for us. Certainly, we've been talking a lot about process improvement as a goal for this year, as well as transparency and responsiveness. And I think this is a great tool to help with all of those goals. So thank you for all your work getting this implemented and rolled out. I know it's been an effort, but I think it really will be very helpful for the town and for the residents and citizens to be able to have that two-way communication and get not only alert us to issues around town, but kind of close that feedback loop and understand what's happening and when things are resolved. So thank you. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess I'm hesitant to go through questions and comments. This is not an item listed on our agenda. And, you know, I think if we're going to do... I think this is, it's an important move. But I think if we're going to have this kind of discussion, it really should be a noticed item so that members of the public can participate as well.
Yes.
But, you know, I've got, at this point, I would not ask any questions. Thanks.
Okay. All right. We'll be sure to add it to the next agenda because I think it will be important, Art, to... We'll communicate this often, you know, and with lots of frequency right now to make sure that people are aware of it. So we'll be sure to do that. Excellent. Did you have anything else in your report, Art?
That's it this evening. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Michelle?
We are working on the FY '25 budget requests with departments and hope to have the beginning number of budget requests to put before the board next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Bill? Oh, sorry, Tom?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Liz.
Bill?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Joe?
I do have two items tonight. I attended the MBTA Advisory Board meeting today. And it's clear... that it's clear that the MBTA is committed to, um, revitalizing, uh, their services to, uh, the cities and towns throughout Massachusetts. It was very nice to hear. It was also, um, sad to hear that other communities, uh, especially Ashland, have experienced the, um, suicide by train episodes that the town, that our town has experienced. And there was a real outreach to the MBTA to figure out what they can do, um, to, um, to make things safer and, uh, what, 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 what are they looking at? So that, um, communities can either prevent or deal with these situations. But it was, um, it was startling and sad to hear that other communities were, had seen what we had seen. Second, um, item I wanted to cover is that the, our parade committee, um, has recruited eight new candidates, uh, who we will be getting their, um, their resumes for our review and possible appointment, uh, to the parade committee. Uh, there will be a transitioning, um, a number of folks will be stepping down, but not this year. Uh, they're, they're planning basically a two-year, um, situation where the new folks will be on and the old folks will continue for at least a year or two so that they learn the process, they learn the ropes, uh, they learn the contacts so that the transition ultimately, when, uh, folks step off, can be smooth. So, uh, hats off to Jim Murphy for, uh, really promoting the, um, availability of the parade committee, uh, to members, uh, and residents of Hingham. Uh, and at this meeting tonight, I'd just like to make sure that all residents know that there are openings on the parade committee. And if you'd like to participate, uh, in whatever fashion you can, uh, please submit your town back applications because there are openings coming up and we would, uh, love to consider you. Uh, so those are the two items for tonight, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, I just want to add that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is hosting the first annual summit tomorrow, seven PM at Town Hall. Um, all are welcome, um, chairs of all of the town committees and boards have been invited. Um, this is really a way to kind of reintroduce the master plan and, um, start a communication process for moving forward uh, with all the town committees and boards, so should be, uh, an exciting step tomorrow night.
I have one other item.
Sure.
I think Thursday night is the menorah lighting. And I, I don't have the time for that, I don't know if you. Or maybe Bill does.
I believe it's five o'clock.
Five o'clock, at the community center.
Yes, uh, all are invited, so, um, looking forward to it, thanks.
Yes, yes, and happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Um, I think, I think that's it unless anybody has anything else to add. Okay, take a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, we are adjourned at six thirty-five PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.